All right, we'll call the City Council Regular and that's not a City Council Regular Meeting, but the City Council Special Meeting with Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting Agenda for Monday, July the 10th, 2023 to order at 4:34. With that, call to order, City Council on Planning and Zoning, roll call, City Council, Madam Secretary, I'll certify that we do have a quorum present as all members are present with the exception of Member Kamkar and Member Patel. With that, we'll turn it to Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to certify that we have a quorum for planning and zoning as well. All members here except for Commissioner Eisenberg.
With that, any citizens' comments turned in? None. So we'll move forward in our agenda. Purpose of the workshop, number one, input and discussion, a request by Drake Dominey, Pelican Brothers applicant on behalf of CBL Pearland Town Center owner for a planned development workshop as required by the Unified Development Code regarding proposed multifamily development consisting of 124 single-family rental dwelling units with an amenity center on approximately 13.7 acres of land generally located parcel behind Pearland Town Center. With that, we'll turn it over to staff for any input and staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. So for this workshop, we're seeking input and discussion on this proposed multifamily development. As stated, it has 124 single-family rental dwelling units with an amenity center, and this is located behind the Pearland Town Center. So if you're not familiar with the area, this is the aerial and zoning map. You can see that it is consisting of three lots, each of which touches out onto Kirby Drive and Business Center Drive, which is how they get their proposed utilities. This area is within the Future Land Use Plan designation of 288 Gateway. This designation should allow for high-quality large office and medical campuses and complementary retail uses centers with vertical integrated residential uses. And you can see that this, the 288 Gateway District is virtually parallel to 288 itself encompassing most of the major lots that run onto 288. So again, this is the area. It's one of the primary green spaces or green lots still out there for development within the Pearland Town Center. And this is the proposed site plan of the development. You can see the amenity recreation center more towards the middle of one of the main blocks, and then they've got a proposed dog park and some, some private drives interior to the lot itself. This is some conceptual imagery that was provided by the applicant. And then, as always with workshops and planned developments, we asked for some proposed deviations that the applicant's looking to get with their requests. Primarily, this involves an increase in the maximum number of dwelling units that are allowed. If you recall, the Pearland Town Center has a maximum of 300 units, but those 300 units are spread throughout the different sections. So this bumps the cap up to 450. And then, one of the other primary deviations deals with open space and landscape areas. This is looking to have the open space be provided within the whole of the town center, and then for the landscape onsite to be 2% of the open area. With that said, this is one of the images that were provided. I believe we'll have the applicant's presentation next. With that, Mayor, that concludes staff's report.
Is the applicant present?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council and Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Andrew Lang with BGE. We are the planner for this project in conjunction with Mirador Group, the architect for the project. And I'm going to turn this over to some members of the developers, Pelican Builders, and let them, tell them a little bit about who they are, and then we'll talk a little more in detail about the specifics of the project. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Derek Darnell, and I'm joined by Drake Dominey, and we're with Pelican Builders. We're a residential developer and builder here in Houston. The founders of our company started developing in this area going all the way back to the 1970s, and our whole focus since inception has been residential development and building. So we have a longstanding track record of doing very high-quality residential projects in communities. So I think we're going to show you a few slides of what we've built and done, but predominantly, over the years, we've built gated communities of slightly higher-density for-sale housing in both the core Houston and suburban areas such as Sugar Land, The Woodlands, and Shenandoah. Why don't you hear the next slide? That image you're seeing in this community in that slide is actually a street scene at a project near the city center memorial, Old Town and Country Site called Memorial Green. I think our engineers pulled that image. But again, high-quality, higher-density residential, which is exactly what your Pearland Town Center calls for in this, this subject site. This image is a project called Somerset Green. You're all probably familiar with the development company, Heinz. Heinz, to a lot of Houstonians, has been, you know, the leader of office development in our city, but they're doing a lot of nice residential land plans, and we were invited to be a participant in their Somerset Green community in the inner loop. Again, you're seeing a high-density residential community. This one happens to be, let me back up, you know, a little more urban, a little taller, nothing what we're planning here for Pearland, but again, gives you an idea of kind of the planning and what we've done in other, other developments. Next one. In addition to two, three-story patio home, town home product, our company does a lot of the high-rise condominium development in the city. So we have that expertise. Again, not applicable here today for the Pearland project, but nonetheless, it's nice to see our capabilities and the other things that we're doing at the, at the current time. This is a project under construction right now near Houston's Tanglewood neighborhood at San Felipe and Chimmy Rock. Okay, is that it?
Then from there, we'd just like to talk a little bit about some of the goals that we have and how we want to see this project hopefully fit into the development as a whole and provide some value to, to the city and residents of Pearland. So I think we've, we've talked before about what we feel, what benefits we feel the single-family rental product can help bring to Pearland, help, help fill in the, the missing middle as we've all discussed before. And I think that the, this project in particular can help bring a, fill a need at Pearland Town Center and will allow for some higher-quality residential while there is existing multifamily just in the north of this. This would be a slightly different product and a different, different look and feel that would really be an asset to the town center, we feel. So just high level, as, as Martin alluded to, we've got a few specific requests mostly dealing with the, the open space and landscaping, and some of that we will, we will vet in conjunction with staff if we move forward with the, the PUD process and a rezone application, just to hammer out some of the details of what, what those specifics actually need to be. But the, the overarching idea is that this is really in addition to what's already existing. So while there will be some self-contained amenities within the project, we're also looking to work this, this development into the overall project as a whole and be in addition and not a detriment to the, to the project and the surrounding neighborhoods. So we've seen the design plan before, but just getting into a little bit of the specifics there, this will be under a, a single ownership, so it will not be fee simple lots. It will be a essentially horizontal multifamily, single-family rental community served by private drives and private utilities within the reserve. We're proposing to meet single-family residential parking requirements as, as we've done with, with projects in the past. We feel that that's really more characteristic of the proposed project and want to ensure that we're providing enough parking for, for the development as a whole, and we are also providing some visitor parking both within the development and on the perimeter of the development to, to serve that need. Just a little bit about the project look and feel, our, our landscape architecture team helped source some images here, and what we were trying to go for is something that would be complementary to the existing material palette and design of the existing Pearland Town Center, but also set itself apart as a high-quality development to, to complement what's there already. So amenities for the project, we're mainly looking at the, the recreation center in the amenity center in the center of the project. There'll be a gated entry clubhouse and resort-style pool in the, in the amenity center. We're also proposing a dog park at the south side. And to help both with visual and physical connectivity to the development as a whole, we're surrounding the entire project with some view fencing so that there is both interaction between pedestrians at the streetscape level and then also to allow the residents to access the trail system to the lake to the south. And again, that's something we'll, we'll flesh out in more detail once we get into the, the beauty and then designs, but that is the intent for the, the amenity plan. And then we've just got a couple of renderings here of the proposed development. So this would be from the entry looking south as you're traveling south towards the project, gated entry and the amenity center in the center of the image there, and lake to the rear of the development. And then this, this image here just helps illustrate how the Mirador Group's design helps to integrate the architecture with, with the rest of Pearland Town Center. And then with that, we'd be happy to take your questions and comments. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I'm going to hand it off to Planning and Zoning for your comments and questions first. Really, before we do, at the end of the day, this backtrack, we have seen numerous, you know, applications come before us, and I think really the question, even before we get to Pelican, which I think is a great product, is what do we want to see there? And the options are fairly limited. It's not going to be, I don't think the town center believes that additional retail needs to be there, but something that complements their retail. So it's either going to be some sort of residential, something like this, or even higher density with, you know, full multifamily, full, you know, apartment living, or entertainment option, or lastly, office. Obviously, the Houston market, I don't think you could build an, well, unless you had cash, I don't think you could get financing for office anytime soon. And then there's been several runs at, at entertainment, but nothing seems to have landed. So really and truly, our options become more and more limited on this particular, you know, piece. And so I know we've had several even residential attempts to take a look at it. So with that, just in mind, that's really the question, we got to answer that question, and then is this the development plan? Is it on the right track for the right development plan if residential is, is what we're looking for? So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to you guys to weigh in first.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner, any comments, questions?
Good evening, everyone. This is a difficult, historically been a difficult PUD. I recall, I guess I was unfortunate, not fortunate to be here, and Mayor Cole, you as well, when we were hashing out the PUD. It is too strict. It's always been too strict. There's a history here. Not only that, just like you said, this is a difficult parcel within a difficult PUD. I, I believe it was, an event center was going to go there, and the city was going to be part owner or be involved with it. That never transpired, and, and we've been stuck with, CBL has been stuck with this parcel for quite a long while. In the recent past, we had a town home project that, that came through, and unfortunately, they came through the same night that the Sullivan Brothers' portal came through. They followed, and it was unfortunate that we had Sullivan's product, and then we saw this one, and we were unpleased with it, and they never got off the starting blocks, I think largely because of that. This project is, is different in that it's single-family rental other than homeownership or a for-sale project. I'm, I'm struggling because I'd rather have that town home product back, a sellable product. And I, and I say that with this in mind, when we had the CPAC meetings, we did discuss the missing middle, and I think the presenter mentioned the missing middle. But the missing middle to us, as we discussed, it wasn't just another rental product, although we, it may be needed in this town as we, you know, have limited parcels to build on. But it was, it was for-sale products that we discussed in the CPAC meetings. So I'm not sure that this is what we want. In fact, I remember when the town home product was, was being shown, Mohammed even mentioned, I'm not trying to throw him under the bus, I promise, he, he mentioned, you know, he would almost prefer to see a multifamily project than the difficulties that the town home project was facing. And at first, I scratched my head how he could make a comment like that's more dense, but I understand what he means, and, and I don't know that that's not the, the answer. So those are my comments. I, I, I'm still kind of waffling, and I'd like to see more detail with what the frontage looked like. I know the big thing for us, and Mohammed had a, a big heartburn with, was, was parking, street parking. You know, we're looking at garages, and then there wasn't enough depth for the parcels, and if you tried to street park, you were going to be blocking driveways, and the width of the road wasn't enough for a fire truck, you know, there was, there was that concern. So just, just kind of rehashing and giving some history here. Thank you.
Hi. Thank you for the presentation. What caused me concerned was the language you used in the presentation saying, "single-family rental community." And to me, my definition of the missing middle for Pearland is ownership, ownership diversity housing, not necessarily another rental option. So when I'm thinking these multifamily dwellings or the town homes, I wanted more options for citizens within Pearland to be able to obtain that ownership. And that is what is concerning for me with this particular project and that I wouldn't be comfortable with. I do agree that for that particular area, if it's not entertainment or some type of multifamily dwelling, that it is going to be difficult to get something in there. Even within that being said, I want it to be a multifamily dwelling that allows for homeownership versus a mere rental. Thank you.
I have a question. If it was rental, would, I mean, this looks like a really nice, high-end product, but would any of it qualify for Section 8 housing?
No, my understanding was this would just be market rate housing.
Okay, and would there be a way for this, maybe this is directed towards the city, just to make sure that that doesn't occur? That they don't have ability to rent it out for Section 8?
We cannot prohibit Section 8 housing, but Section 8 housing has to come to the city for application, and it would need the council's consent. So each one would be considered on its own merit.
Okay, so if they did decide to do this, it would still have to come to the city for approval. Okay, that's what I was wondering. I think I'm, I like the product. I think it's a really nice product, but I just think it still takes away from ownership of a different type of product, and I would rather it be ownership than rental. But if rental is the only thing that anybody's attracted to for this, this lot, then, then that might be the situation of what needs to go there.
Commissioner McCatharine, first, thank you for coming. I will, you said a couple of key things that I really liked, and that was addressing the middle, the missing middle. We do need to, whether it's ownership or lease, you really don't know what a family's preference is. There are some people who would prefer not to be tied up in a 30-year mortgage. They would rather have the flexibility to come in, look at a community, decide if they want to own somewhere else. The single ownership is nice in that they have a single point of contact if there is an issue or a problem, and it looks like single-family. You know, we have some engineering issues, and I don't have the history that some of the others have, but those were the key points that I took away. I would not be opposed to having a rental complex or rental property project in that area because I think the town center is built to accommodate and to accept that type of living. And I think you would actually enhance the town center shopping area and some of the stores and how empty they are. So if you have a complex where you have families moving in, it helps the school district, it helps the commu, the, the town center. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Dansby, a couple of things. We were talking about the missing middle as a financing entity. We don't do very many 30-year mortgages, but I can tell you right now, nobody's wanting to buy a house at the rates there are now. And the quality of product that they used to get at a price point you could afford is not available to those of the starter homes or beginner entering the market. So, you know, as much as we want to have a residential community that somebody wants to buy, and I completely, absolutely agree because we are missing that niche of opportunity for new home buyers in this community right now. It's a terrible time to have that product on the ground if you own it or if you are trying to sell it and if you're trying to buy it because it, you have shrunk your ability to buy. That said, you know, I live in Shadow Creek, so we frequent that area for different reasons and shop and eat and spend a lot of time over there. And, you know, the, the backside of the town center is, is a dead zone, if you want to put it any other way, primarily because of this property being vacant for so long. I was looking forward when I was on PDC to having entertainment complex. We can wish for all kinds of things and hold out for it, and if it doesn't happen, you know, then, then the owners of the property need to find something to fill it. So, and that's, if this product is comparable to the Memorial Green product that was used in example and the elevations, I think that, I think it's a, it's a, it's a really nice quality product that would be put on the ground. So we'll wait and see, you know, there's, you know, the, the amenities that are there are comparable to pretty much anything else you're going to get, I think. Dog park seems to be. I think dog park seems to be, you know, always a go-to. Connectivity to the walking trails is, is a need always. You know, the one. Yes, there's three entrances, one main and two, you know, I, I would, as usual, um, you know, gate access and ingress, egress is always a question. You know, fire codes with the fire department, we talked about before, parking on the street, the ability of fire trucks getting in and out. It's been brought up previously and, and, and by other commissioners. So, uh, you know, I, I don't think it's a bad product. I hope that the elevations and the product that actually ends up being put on the ground is similar to what we've been shown. You know, the, the fencing and the available views from the backside to the lake is, is a positive, I think. The fencing facing the mall area, I would like some, I'm not sure what kind of product that might be. But is that an opaque or is that a more like a brick wall scenario?
No, it would be view fencing all the way around.
All the way around. You know, we have some, some visibility questions about, you know, landscaping and that kind of thing that can be addressed at some point later down the road. But. All in all, I, I'm not disappointed in the product. I think it'll be good. I'm disappointed in the fact that, that if it's not a storage unit, it's an apartment complex or it's a multifamily. And that's pretty much all that we ever spend our time talking about. But if that's where it is, that's where it is. And so. I hope that the product ends up being on the ground similar to his proposal. I know it's a long way down the road, you're just getting started and we appreciate y'all being here. So, uh, if that wraps up, the commissioners, that's our feedback at this time.
All right, and we'll swing back by just to make sure there may be some other questions that pop up. Just before we move on, I, I'd like to hear definitions of missing middle. I bet you with everybody in the room, everybody has a different definition. Uh, I, I'm going to start with the applicant. Define your missing middle.
Yeah, so I think in, in my mind, you could, you could really be, and I mean, I want to thank the, uh, commission for their comments. Those are very helpful and, and appreciate all the, the perspectives certainly. In my mind, I think you could be talking about either a, a single family residential, traditional product. Entry level house. We're starting to see some of our, um, land development clients trending towards, um, you know, very narrow lots. That, um, would, would not be typical for Pearland, uh, as small as, uh, 25 to 40-foot product. And that's, that's how they're trying to address, um, you know, bringing, bringing costs down for, uh, both themselves. But ultimately the, the end user, I mean, as, as, um, the chair alluded to, the, um, there, there seems to be no end in sight. For the, the interest rates, at least at the, for the time being. And, uh, I think the builders are reacting to that and are trying to come up with creative solutions to. Uh, combat that issue, both for their, for their own business practice, but also for the end users, right? I mean, everyone needs to have somewhere to live. We would all like for that to be as high quality as possible. And so I think one of the solutions is, um, certain, certain segments of the market, I think, um, seem to really prefer. A single family rental product. It brings all of the, uh, the benefits and, um, street look and feel of, of a single family product. But with, um, the added benefit of having, you know, professionally managed, uh, property management companies. Taking care of some of the things that maybe they don't, they don't care to, um, yard maintenance. You know, some of these, the amenities that would be more typical in a, um, a resort style apartment complex. Like, like the amenity centers and the, the dog parks. So you get some of those benefits as well, uh, that you would normally see in a, in a master plan community. And at a much more reasonable, um, monthly price point for them. And then, you know, on the, on the flip side, I, I do appreciate the commissioner's comments about. About single family, uh, for sale product. And, um, I think the, again, the challenge there is. What, what we are hearing as a consultant from our, our clients is that. That is becoming more and more difficult to achieve. And, and the only way that they have been able to solve that problem so far has been to reduce the, the size of the lots. And so we're seeing, like I mentioned, products as narrow as 25 by about 115 or 120. 40 by 120 seems to be very popular, 45 by 120 is very popular. And, you know, to, to get into the price point range that we're, I think we're all used to talking about in that 200 to 300 range. For some, some entry level product, that seems to be what it's, what it's taking to accomplish that. We do also have, um, some projects that we're working on where, uh, our clients are exploring tiny home communities. And I think while that's, that's an interesting take, I, I know for. For the city in particular, um, is much more traditional city, which I certainly appreciate and respect. So, um, that probably wouldn't be the product for here, but I'm, I'm just trying to lay out all the different, uh, options that we're, we're starting to see as a response to the market conditions.
So I've got a couple of other questions, uh, just real quick. So it looks like on this schematic that's up in front of us, plus some of the, uh, uh, product that you, that you showed. They, they seem to be attached like a town home. So you're, but you're calling them single family.
So, yes.
I just define that for me because I know in some of these, it looks as though there may be some spaces like a, a patio home. But that top row up against the ring road, those seem to be, uh, three units, four units, four units, three units. So those are town homes.
Yeah, yes, Mr. Mayor, that's, that's correct. Uh, along the, along the ring road frontage, there are some packages of town homes there and then the remainder of the development.
So it's a mixture, so it's really a mixture between some town homes and single family, traditional detached.
Yes, sir.
Uh, maybe not traditional, but more of a patio home, uh, style. So if, and I, I don't know if the developers have this number available or not. I know this is being, uh, packaged as a, as a rental product. But if you were to, you know, make this for sale to the public with, with what you guys do from a, from a high-end finish. What would these units sell for?
I think if, if we were asked to program. Higher density for sale homes here. Again, just kind of spitballing, probably six, $700,000. Maybe a little lower. That's just again, based off of land prices, interest rates, cost to build.
That's certainly not your missing.
Micro units.
That's not your missing middle. That's the point I wanted to get to. If you want a for sale product. On the back of this, you're not looking at a missing middle product. I know what the town center is looking to get for, I mean, they own the dirt and they deserve to sell it at a market rate. And you're just not going to get a for sale product that's going to be.
Not really much lower. And if you, if, if someone tried to, you probably wouldn't be very proud to have that at your town center, you know? You'd say, why did we let, why did we force that? And now we're looking at a really, maybe just architecturally not a very pleasing product.
And, and that is, I mean, the biggest threat to homeownership, not just in Texas or the Houston area, but in the country right now is affordability. It's just being able to afford anything, not just, and this was before interest rates went up.
It was already, it was already happening.
It was already there.
And then the pandemic and now the interest rates. It's a kind of a perfect storm as far as affordability.
That's all the questions I have. Turn it over to council for questions, comments. Member Barry, start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and I want to appreciate you guys, thank you for, uh, for coming out and, and providing this presentation. Did a good, great job and, uh, for all the other commissioners, I appreciate all your comments. I actually kind of think this is perfect for this area. I personally don't feel like, uh, I would want to own a home, a large or small in a sea of rental. I just don't, I don't see the, the value and the increased value over time there. I do like the high-end amenities associated with it. I think we do need a higher-end product there. And I, I remember, uh, Commissioner Fuertes's, uh, uh, town homes that were presented. And they were, they were nice, it, you know, but just didn't cut the mustard in some areas. So I, I like the product. I think it's a good product, uh, high-end, I think it fits, so I'd be on board with it.
I, um, agree with. Member Barry, I think these look really good. I think they fit perfectly here. I was on planning and zoning and some other things were presented here and they didn't work out. I remember the great debate on the street with, like, member, uh, Commissioner Fuertes said. I, I really like this here, so I'm, I think it looks good. If it really looks like y'all presented, it looks good.
I might add, you know, we had a, what would you call it, a workshop meeting with your staff? And we were given recommendations of scale and, you know, um, we'd like this to be seamless with the town center. So we've already put a lot of thought into a good complimentary product. And that's why, uh, Mayor Cole, you mentioned, hey, we see some town home styled at the frontage. That was the direction we were given was, hey, you're coming from retail and then there's some multifamily. And if you notice the scale and the roof lines of the multifamily, maybe the first street scene impression ought to be that similar scale. And then as you get within the community is when the units become detached slightly and. Have slightly different roof lines and such.
One more question here. On here, just real quick, it does say, uh, the building height for the E D C is 35 feet high. But y'all asked for a proposed 75 feet high, is that?
That's what's existing in the, in the P U D already. So we were, we were proposing no change to that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I think, uh, compared to the. Uh, units that Commissioner Fuertes alluded to earlier, this is much more aesthetically pleasing. So I think you've got that going for you. I however, would, um. Like to see something slightly different here, actually. So we, we've had, um, some conversations that were trending towards, um, being open to more density. Maybe going a little bit higher and I think, you know, something like that might spur a, a shift in the development in this area. Cause I think, you know, um, this is, this is a good addition to it. But, um, I think if, if we're really going to try to change the, the look and feel of this portion of the city, particularly with town center. If there's going to be potential future investment, um, taking place, having something like one of the other, um, properties that you showed. You know, having a, you know, high-rise type product, particularly in that price point. If we are going to, you know, gravitate towards talking about something for sale, if we had condos for sale, something like that. Wouldn't have to take up as much of the space, we could dedicate more to green space. I know in here you talked about not, uh, trying to find that comment where, um, you had talked about not doing. The additional, uh, additional compensating open space will not be provided. Improvements will be made to properties, uh, amenity package and to the surrounding detention and trail system. Can you talk a little bit about what you're proposing there? Yeah, so our, our thought process was that, um, since this is coming into an existing established development. And it, it is more of a mixed use development. Our, our thought process was that, um, a design similar to this really kind of made more sense in the context. Um, and it's, it's not that we won't be providing any landscaping, we will. There is a landscape buffer along the, the ring road that will separate the, um, the fence line from the back of curb. And parallel parking spaces that we've proposed there. And, and the thought process is once we get a little deeper into the landscape architecture design. We would like to come up with ways to creatively integrate, integrate the development with the, the trail system to the south. And, um, potentially any other, uh, improvements along, alongside that. But, uh, high level, that's just kind of what the, the thought process behind the design. Yeah, and I guess some of my comments also are geared towards trying to find ways that if it's possible to preserve any of this, uh, space. Or future type of public access, you know, uh, recreation center, whatever it is, y'all have potentially envisioned with maybe other products. I don't really know what your full, full portfolio is or what maybe this space tends towards. But if there was more of a high-rise product and I've seen some of them in, you know, the Houston area where they get the high-rise and they've got kind of the retail like right there. And they've got open space, event centers and stuff like that. I think that would be, uh, for me, I would love to see something like that over this, you know, every day of the week. Maybe except for Sunday, because I rest on Sunday, but every other day. And that's really all I've got. I, this is just throwing opinions out, that's my opinion. Thank you, Mayor.
Deal. Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. So just to make sure I have the understanding, you're talking about the, the front property is where your more town home, uh, type product is and then everything behind that.
Yes.
Is your single family or one store or whatever.
That, that was the recommendation. It can be, doesn't have to be that way, but that was the suggestion.
No, no, I, I was just curious because when, when the mayor started talking.
It's just the frontage of the, the, the front street.
Okay, that was one of my questions, what the mix was and how it, how it came together, because I was kind of curious.
We designed it specifically for this property.
Okay, and as far as, um, uh, being rental units, uh, somebody drives into this project. Where is the leasing office? Where's that going to be housed?
It's that central.
In the recreation.
Community center where the pool is. So it, it serves both as the leasing and where residents can go and enjoy the space.
Okay, it wasn't noted, that's what I was just curious. As far as the product.
Same, same facility.
Okay, as far as the product itself, I, I feel that it's comparable for the area that's there and I don't see a problem with it, so. I'm good with it.
Member Kane, sir?
Thank you, sir. And I came by just a little bit late, but, um. Can I just get some context here? Is this all single family for rent or is there actually going to be a for sale to families?
All, all single family rental.
Okay, great. Martin, can we go through the document real quick? I've got my page markers off the, um, write-up. And I'm, I'm just trying to get clarity more than anything else. On page four of the document, I know Martin will get there, uh, the staff requested renderings and elevations. Why wasn't that provided?
They were.
Well, in the memo, it says it wasn't, so. We, John, do we have those?
They were provided, uh, late on Friday, I believe.
The renderings, yes.
We have hard copies that we can pass to all the council members.
So those were provided?
We finally got them, but at the time of writing it and having to get the agenda out.
Got it, right. Uh, and then can we go to page, I want to go to the amendments on the P U D request. I think that starts at page 18 of the write-up. Yeah, uh, the dwelling spaces under here. Your max dwelling, uh, if we did the D U standard, you'd be at 219. You're at close to 450. Can you talk to me about that density a little more?
Sure, so, um, part of the reason for the, the initial request and, and we think that we would revise this. Now that we have a little bit more information, uh, we, we didn't have an accurate count of the existing, um, multifamily units at the time that we submitted initially. So we think that we can, uh, we can reduce the, the request.
What is the revised request then?
Uh, so I think we would be able to reduce it down to.
The request currently is twice what the, the standard is.
Uh, we, we are proposing 124 units. I believe the, um, the, and the original P U D capped us at, um, 300. And there were 234 units that were existing. So we just wanted to ensure that we weren't, um, requesting something that was, was.
So you guys want to revise the cap down? You've asked for 450, according to what the document write-up says.
We, we would request a lower amount, yes.
I think that's just something.
Probably around.
The council's benefit.
Yeah, the original P U D had 300 units max. This is going to bust that cap, they're just raising the cap.
Yeah, 360 or 375 would probably be where we would revise the request to.
Martin, can we move up just a little bit, uh, to landscape? I guess our standard is currently 15% of gross area and you guys want to be at 2%. Can you talk to me about that?
Sure, so what, one of the ways that's unique about the way the P U D was written is it's broken out into sub-areas. And so we were, we were simply calculating, um, that 2% being just from our project area. We would probably have to, to take a look at that in some more detail and ensure that, um, we, we may be able to provide some additional landscape area is the, the short answer.
So are you guys going to offer a, a larger number then?
We, we would look into it, but yes.
Okay. And then utilities down on the next page, you guys are doing private sewer, private water?
Right.
water?
Right.
So the city would not be receiving water revenues from that water?
There would there would be a master meter. But in internal to the project, it would be it would be private utilities, but there would be a master meter.
You're still buying city water, then?
Yes.
All right, and then can we go to page 20, I guess 21, where you had the pricing? It's looks like it's three and a half million, and it's currently the negotiated amount on the 13.9 acres. I had to pull my Excel calculator, but that's almost $6 a square foot. It just, as somebody who works in the space, housing really breaks down for single family after about a buck fifty. I usually try not to go above a buck, but I understand why you're having to go down the rental route. No shade to Pelican, they've done a great job. I've seen their product in Somerset Green. When I was at Toll Brothers, they built single family houses, and those houses were quite expensive. But, you know, that was a long time ago for me. I think the quality is good, but I just, it's a homeownership thing. I think I heard some of the members on the P N Z talk about that. It's it's an ownership thing. I I'm struggling to give U D C adjustments and then not get the ownership piece, so I'm probably not going to support this. But I appreciate the time and the energy that you guys have put working with staff. Thank you.
Member Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. I think most everything's been hit on. I guess the the positive comments are the renderings. So i- if or when this does come back, I'd want to make sure that the the pictures you're showing us are tied in fairly tight to get staff comfortable that we're getting a product that you're showing us, that we're approving, that actually follows through and ends up on the ground. And besides that, that's all the comments I have. Thank you. Well, I guess one more. Earlier, Pelican was mentioning that you you typically do gated high density for sale products. Have you done a for rent product before?
Yes, we have. We're under construction of one right now in the Katy area, and then years ago, the company did others.
Okay, and then do y'all typically hold on to these in your portfolio or sell them off?
You know, it really just depends. I mean, it's hard to say. Market to market and timing.
All right, thank you.
Fair question. What question? I'll ask this, because I think it begs the question. And I understand the product, and it's a much upgraded product from from some of what we've seen before. But you guys are also in the market and you know the multifamily market, you you guys, the high rises and and others. Did you look at, say, a mid rise product here, like two buildings?
No, we didn't.
Structured parking, that type of stuff?
We did not. When this type of concept came out, we were excited because we excel at single family high density land plans and making the units look very interesting and architecturally pleasing. There's a lot of really poor rental product done, as we all know, over time and in different markets. And we were excited about segueing into this product type. We were introduced to C B L properties specifically for this build to rent concept. I think some other apartment groups had looked at this track, and we were told that Pearland didn't want traditional multifamily here. We only considered the build to rent at the advice of some people in this room and C B L and our own engineers and land planners. We have not looked at it as a traditional multifamily apartment deal.
I do have a question, like the green space swath, you know, on both sides of the rec center between the units. So just so I can, I'm looking here. It looks like, is that going to be like the the front entry? I mean, you have a you have an entry off of the main road. You come in off the main road, you turn either direction.
Martin, do you mind switching to our presentation? I'll show, bring up the rendering for the mayor.
So you're coming in right there, you see the the units that are facing, I guess, would be the mall area. You can see that. On the other side of it, obviously, would be the garages on both sides of that road. And then I'm assuming in that space that I was pointing to in the in the aerial of the land plan is is kind of a green open space. Is that just, is that a shared open space between all of the units? How does how does that work? I mean, it's all for rent, so it's all.
Yeah, it's all shared. I mean, but when you pull in the gate, the first thing you would arrive to is the leasing and community center. Anything outside of the footprint of the home, garage, the front door, is shared space. Nothing's restricted, I mean, the property's restricted, the main entry. But once you're there, you can walk around and go to the pool, you can go to the dog park, you can go to the trail to the south. It'll all be open and accessible.
Okay, all right. Last call for comments, anybody got anything? Oh, Member Kamcor?
Martin, is there a masonry guideline in here or any any materials guideline? Are they complying? Is there one in the U D C as it stands, or is that an open item or an undiscussed item?
It's an undiscussed item as far as the town center. I know the town center has retail requirements, but I believe that when they wrote in townhomes for the property that was across Kirby, that 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 didn't have a facade element to it. But again, I'm going off memory on that.
That's fine. I would just, I know we're in a workshop, but for the further discussion, what does that look like? You've got, based on what this rendering says on the screen, there's like three different elements there. Architecturally, that's not my thing, but for some people, they like that. I'd just like to understand what it what is, what are we looking at on facade? And since it's obviously a negotiated item, it's an open item.
Yeah, I mean, I like the the different facades, it gives a different depth and look, articulation is there. I think your point would be how much how much of it's how much of it's hardy versus, you know, more of a brickstone and those types of things, that you might want to, you know, encapsulate that in the P U D as to what, you know, what those percentages would be there. I mean, I like the different looks and feels, different colors. It gives it depth, it gives it a little different look than just, you know, one broad brush of a color, so. Last call for council, questions?
Thank you, Mayor. So immediately after I said, the comments I said earlier, these two members here said that they might have some privacy concerns with the people behind. So I said, well, what about a mid rise? And the mayor mentioned a mid rise, having a couple of different buildings as an alternative. And so they they nodded their head that maybe they would be open to that. I don't want to speak for them, but that's what I understood from their head nod. So I think that would also be something that I would be open to. I would love to see that.
You want to concur on that or refute it?
I was just agreeing with him with the fact that I understood his point. I would still have the same concerns with a mid rise on privacy, right?
It would depend on how rise the mid rise was, but since they're single family homes right over that water, high rise, I think, would be a problem. But I do love green space, so I I do feel his argument.
Mr. Chairman, wrap up comments from anybody on the P N Z?
Anyone have any follow up comments, questions?
Good deal.
No, sir.
Staff, Martin, anyone?
I was just going to mention that we've seen a variety of facade renderings today, and I'll make sure that should this go forward, that we have some further discussions on that.
Good deal. Hopefully you've got a little bit of clarity. We had some good comments today. So, fellas, we appreciate you guys coming. With that, we're going to adjourn this combined workshop at 8:28.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.